In a minute there, but I'm recommending that Commissioner Tim O'Donnell again be president, Commissioner Cliff Sweeney be vice president, and Commissioner Blanchard again be treasurer. Liaisons, I am recommending Commissioner Sweeney for the Plan Commission, Commissioner Ritz III for Parks and Recreation, and Commissioner Buckman for Citizens Advisory. Pass this over to you.
Okay, so the mayor's made these recommendations. As board members, you have in front of you positions presented based upon his recommendation. Does anybody have any concerns or would like to see changes or modifications or enhancements?
I guess I have a question coming.
Sure, yes, sir.
I guess there's the old adage, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Okay.
I do know historically, they're, the board, used to reshuffle some things up, give other commissioners a chance to be liaisons to other committees, whether they wanted that chance or not. I don't know the intentions at the time, but just wondering if everyone up here is okay with the recommendation, or everyone happy where they're at? Anyone interested in doing something different? That's all.
I'm good. I'll just put out there.
I'm looking forward in the future to experiencing other things, but I feel like I need some more time in that position, so I'm glad that, I'm just really just getting to know the community and my committee, and I'd like to stay with that now, but in the future, I'd like to shuffle around and try other things.
I'm fine with planning concerning this home.
Okay. Mr. Ritz, are you okay?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I thought I had a good, good one term in parks, I thought we made a lot of accomplishments, looking forward to the future. I echo Commissioner Buckman's statement as well, you know, it'd be, you know, just to see how I do on different committees as well.
Sure, okay. Is anyone willing to swap with Mr. Ritz for committee liaisons or position? I'll say if you guys will have me as president, I would be happy to serve as president. If you are not interested in my serving as president, I'm happy to move in a different direction. But anybody intent upon exchanging or swapping? It doesn't seem that way. Mr. Ritz, there's good news and bad news with this. You'll bring your talents and expertise to it. It's not permanent. In one year, we'll reorganize the board again to a point, so you will have that opportunity. The other side is, having been in that position where you're in a position that feels sort of almost interminable, and you do want more things, I definitely sympathize with your position, having been there and having, you know, felt that at times. But, what do they say, there are no small actors, only small parts, or what is it? You know, something like that? So, I don't know. Okay, so, I hope you'll be able to make sure.
That was a Shakespeare reference?
It was backwards, but sure, but you know. In simplest terms, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen for switching at the moment.
No, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm not complaining, I'm just, just, I know we've been keeping the same, almost the same board now, since I've, since I've been here, it's just, that's all, I just bring it to everyone's attention. And while I'm at it, if I, you know, I'm taking the parks and recreation, if anyone does know any bands, any entertainment for the next summer in the park, I'd like to get the ball rolling on that now, so.
I'll get with it.
I have one, I think that came via you to me, so.
I have a ton of them.
Okay. They're a little out of our budget, but we'll see what we can do.
And if I might add, once you do determine that and you have a budget, make sure you get it to staff in our planning phase, so we can add it.
Well, we added some last.
Yeah, you can email us at any time, because we'll start working on the budget probably in February, with requests like that. You know, hey, I'm looking at this, you know, it's gonna be about 600 or 700, so we kinda have an idea as we're moving forward, and as we try to balance things, so.
Okay.
Also Gettysburg Rocks is interesting, and coming into Emmitsburg also, so I'll get you in touch with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the other item is, the mayor will not let me leave this position as the middle seat. I would go over there if I could, but I'm not allowed evidently, but if anybody else in the, at a future meeting wants to recite, I don't think there'd be any disrespect taken by the mayor, so, you know, consider what your options are. I mean, the shuffling of the deck of the positions on the dais, there were some questions about that earlier. So, you know, as commissioners, we do have that option. The mayor did have an intent with that, it sounds like, so just be mindful. Moving forward from there, Mr. Mayor, I think that satisfies the reorganization of the board. It looks like the recommendations have been accepted. Staff, I don't know that we need to vote on that, or do we? I don't recall that being something that requires a board approval.
Per the code, you should take a vote.
Okay, then, the code says, and therefore we will. Wow, my memory's not good. All right, therefore, is there a motion to accept the recommendations of the mayor for the reorganization of the board as of October 2nd, 2017?
I'll make a motion to accept the mayor's recommendation of the reorganization of the Board of Commissioners, October 2nd, 2017.
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. Very good. Okay, moving forward. Agenda item three, updates on community-related projects such as the State Highway Administration Sidewalk, the Flat Run Bridge, the Square Project, the Dog Part, et cetera.
I'm gonna take a second while she gets the PowerPoint ready for me, and step back to the cash activity report. I have a correction. The roofing was for the lab roof at the wastewater treatment plant, not the pumping station.
Okay, you said the lab roof at the?
Lab roof, roof, at the wastewater treatment plant.
Great, okay.
It was in the old building out there.
Okay.
So.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
As we're going through this, if we have any questions, should we wait till the end of the presentation?
No, before you ask me, right then and there.
Okay.
Well, let me get through each section, each is broken off, broken up between projects, in case I've answered it on another slide. I will do my best to answer your questions.
Yeah, it's good, I think, because it needs to be.
Everybody okay with this light over us on?
How do I change it?
Okay, lighting sufficient?
Maddie, how do I change it? Which button is it? I don't know, here's a thing.
No.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not, yeah, exactly. I need help.
We have a 15 mile, right?
Really? Sit down, was that?
Tired, tired.
Chapers Farm?
Chapers Farm, okay.
We have aid stations there.
Huh.
Oh, I know, gracious.
October 4th.
Happy festival next Sunday, huh?
You don't want to do that.
Kids are requested.
There's the kids' right to.
Yeah.
Would you like me to wait for Commissioner Buckman?
Um.
Yes.
I think, I think we can move forward.
Okay.
I mean, I think we've got this to fall back on as well.
Yes. All right, as you know, there are quite a few projects going on in town that staff is currently working on, and this is just gonna be a highlight of the top five projects. It's not, we're not limited to this, that all that we're working on. These are our big projects. All right, first off, the Emmett Gardens Playground. And, taking a look at this, the application was submitted to MDE, the Joint Federal State Application for the Alteration of Any Flood Plane, Waterway Title, or Non-Title Wetland in Maryland. So this basically show, it's hard to see, but this shows you why we had to submit a plan to MDE, because the proposed location for the Emmett Garden Playground is located in the 100-year floodplain, and anytime there's a disturbance to the floodplain, you basically have to get permission from MDE or FEMA to make any alterations. So, we submitted that application on September 26th, and we actually received an email today that MDE has received our application, and they have up to 180 days to review it. But they did consider it a minor project, so we're hoping that it's not gonna take the entire 100 day, 180 days to review. And again, this is just the site plan that we had to submit to them, of where the play area would be, so it is a good distance away from the trees. That one tree that's on there, that you can see right behind the shadowed area, staff is going to remove that. Oh, there's the dead pine tree. Ms. Sipperly put this in there to show you the dead pine tree, that she's currently working with Potomac Edison on.
And one's getting that way.
So we are working with Potomac Edison, unfortunately, they don't, they don't jump at everything. So what the playground consists in the funding. The application fee was waived, the MDE waived our fee, which should, which could've been up to $750, but they waived that. To be compliant with ADA, we have to install an asphalt walkway, which is about $1,000. And then, the estimate that we received would be for the playground equipment, rock borders, and wood carpet. The estimate came in at $15,930, for a total estimated cost of the project being $16,930, of which $10,000 is a, is a project open space grant, and the board set aside several years ago, an additional $7,500 to fund the playground, which brings your total funding to $17,500.
There, I had the chance to attend the community show, and I met somebody from Civitan, Ginger Malone, I have the phone number now, I'm happy about that. The Civitan organization is interested in providing funds toward a playground project, potentially this one, and they're looking to provide play equipment funding for individuals with special needs. And I think that would enhance our budget. If I could give you the contact number, I'll email that to you, so you have a hard copy. But the individual's name was Ginger Malone.
Okay.
And I think I gave you some of it, but hopefully that will enhance what we're doing.
Okay. But if it's gonna be for special needs, we may wanna include it in an area that is more accessible to your entire town, but it's something we definitely can look at, if we wanna make it more centralized.
Okay, well, aren't we obligated to make this ADA compliant, though? I mean, access to it?
The access, yes, and that's what we are doing with the asphalt. We have, you have to do that for all your playground areas.
Okay.
I think it's just the space, it's limited space, so Ms. Willis.
Yes, it is a small space.
Maybe.
Okay.
I've seen the one they have in Thurmont, and I think it's a great idea that might be a different location, it might be better suited for, but.
Well, I don't know what the actual piece of equipment is, so I don't know how much.
Oh, so it's just one piece of equipment?
I don't, I, I don't know what they're gonna bring to the table, if they're gonna say, hey, this is $1,000, or this is, you know, $50,000.
Right.
But I think that conversation needs to be, needs to take place.
It's several pieces of equipment for special needs. They have, they just did this down Thurmont.
But it might not be the same thing, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
I mean, it might be a special swing, it might be, you know, just a thing, so, we'll cross that bridge, how about we do that?
Right.
Sorry, no bridge jokes. We'll, we'll address it as it comes forward, how about that?
So once we receive the review from MDE, and if we get the go-ahead, then we can proceed with the installation of the playground. Unfortunately, we're on hold until they give us the okay.
So right now, you have enough money to cover?
Yes.
Great.
Two things, the MDE.
Yes.
They're reviewing the site, not so much what's being installed.
Well, no, they had to be sent everything.
Okay.
They had to be sent the site plan, the proposed equipment, and our application, which is basically the amount of area that's being disturbed, in their eyes, being disturbed, and this, this estimate came from playground specialist that has done work for us in the past, and is aware of our needs with it being in a floodplain, so all this equipment should be acceptable to MDE.
I, I, I had two questions. One was, who is the vendor? That makes sense.
Yes.
In the sense that they, that same company already installed other playground equipment at their parks. I guess, my other question is, or comment is, I don't remember seeing the proposed equipment. I know we talked about it.
Right. I don't have the estimate, I don't have the actual breakdown with me, what it was.
Is that something you'd wanna see in the next meeting, maybe?
Yeah, and I, I'll have a, there'll be, yeah, I'll have a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting in November, so, next month.
We basically let them know, playground specialists, the ballpark price range we were looking at, and what equipment could we get in this range, and just, I don't recall off the top of my head, because we got the estimate probably about two months ago, three months ago, exactly what the breakdown was, and looking at other vendors, what we could get for this price was more than what some other vendors could offer us.
Okay.
It's probably going to be close to what probably Solo Hills is.
Could be. I think so.
Because they got the mulched park in the swing.
Right.
I mean, bringing it to the next meeting's fine, I'm just.
Would you rather see in the meantime, I mean, you can get it in the meantime, I know that, I'm sure that you have it, like, is this something that you could just send them in an email, an attachment, or send the board as an attachment, just to see what it looks like?
Yes.
So.
I'm just curious.
If that could be done, that would be good. So that way, you have it at the meeting, and that way, we're not in the gray.
And then we're, you know, we're already.
Yeah, I mean, I, we looked at things that you, that you, I guess your committee originally had circled.
Yeah.
And some of the recommendations, and some of them were.
Over budget.
Yes. And so this was within the budget, with having taken consideration with the ADA path. But I'll send that to you, so you can take a look at.
Thank you.
At what it is. I know that there was a quest for, to talk for a basketball court.
Yes.
And that disturbed a significant amount of area that MDE, I do not believe was going to approve, so we were trying this route, where we think that we will definitely get approval. Because you're putting, you know, your, your basketball court's putting cement down, or concrete, or asphalt, down on your floodplain. And we felt these, the kids, you know, not everybody plays basketball, but pretty much all kids like playground equipment, and can get some use out of it.
That's true. Thank you.
Do we expect any landscaping requirements, other than like?
No.
The tips or whatnot, like, you know, tall grass, or native grass, or anything akin to that?
So we already, it's already mowed, but no, we're not expecting anything, we're gonna take that, that set of trees out that's right behind the playground, they're, it's extremely overgrown and unsightly.
Okay.
I don't foresee any need for landscaping.
Okay. Great. Anything else related to this one? Okay.
Nope, okay. Moving on to the Route 140 revitalization project, the sidewalks in the square, the estimated completion is the spring of 2018. And we just put in, gathered up some pictures that we had of some of the work that was happening. This is on the west end of town, by the doughboy. Another look. And this is in front of 22 East Main Street, when they made it to the east side of town. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we had a series of streetlight poles out on East Main Street as they were coming through. They damaged some conduit, and tried to repair it with duct tape, and then cement it over. So that's staff trying to fix these lights. It was a three-day process to get them back working. This is brickwork in front of 306 West Main Street. If you haven't had a chance to go take a look at it, it looks beautiful, I think they did an outstanding job with the brick. And then there's more brickwork in front of 317 West Main.
A question came up, somebody was asking, what determined where the brick was? I know most of these are sites where brick had been, but beyond that, was there any opt-in on brick, or?
I don't believe we had anybody opt-in for brick. If you had brick, you could get brick back.
Uh-huh, okay.
And I think the majority of people actually had their brick taken out.
Okay.
And had it concrete, but a few wanted the brick to remain.
Because that was the other question, people are wondering if they can get the old bricks, the ones that got removed.
The other people?
Sure, that was like, that was the second group, the second set of questions.
It's the contractor's brick.
Okay.
It's part of their contract.
So they get to keep what they pull up?
They did have people pull up wheelbarrows and take a bunch of brick.
I was wondering about that.
It is their brick.
And going back to the duct tape, duct tape conduit?
I will get to that, that's back here.
Okay, all right.
I will enlighten everybody.
Good pun.
Yeah. Unintentional. All right, so, just a basic update on this, they're 35.7% complete, they are actually ahead of schedule, believe it or not. The goal is to finish East Main Street going east, and then they're gonna work back towards the square, west, towards the square. There'll be no work, as the mayor mentioned, no work on October 5th and 6th for Fallen Firefighters Weekend. PNC Bank work will commence on October 9th, because the bank is closed, and they will do the sidewalk in front, as well as the drive-through area, and the drive-through will be closed until noon, they will open on noon on October 10th, to allow them to complete the work. The connection to Timber Mill will occur at the end of the sidewalk work prior to the square work. The contractor still needs to complete the asphalt patch where they did the waterline work on North Seaton at the square, and when they do that, they're gonna have to impose the legal, the local detour, if you recall, where they shut down North Seaton, and you won't be able to turn on North Seaton Avenue.
I have a question. Are they, are we, are they going to continue, to finish the sidewalk from Irish Town Road down to the square? Because that one piece in front of the Legion, and that one set house across from the Catholic Church has not been done.
I.
They're going, they're gonna go up there, some negotiated place where they can, they're going up to, as part of the square project up there, and I asked the same question, why it wasn't done there, and it, I was told that there wasn't enough money in that phase of money to go any further, where, where you're talking about, in front of Legion, but.
That doesn't make any sense.
That's not part of this project. I know there's a concern with the, a light pole that is in the middle of the sidewalk there, and I know that they, engineers working on whether or not, how they're going to accommodate that light pole, as well as the sidewalk, but that section of the sidewalk isn't part of this project.
Is the sidewalk part of the square project, then?
No, this part, that, that part going, you're talking about going north on North Seaton is not part.
Yeah, there's one piece missing. Everything's been replaced the whole way down, except for, in front of the Legion to the square.
Right, that was part of the other project, if you recall, when they did South Seaton and North Seaton last year?
Yes.
Yes, so, but the main concern was that pole, if you recall, there's a pole sitting right smack dab in the middle of the sidewalk.
Oh, well, they got one down further, that's in the sidewalk.
So they're aware of that, and I don't know, they're working on how to proceed.
But it, it, it would look really horrible to leave that piece undone. It's just that, is it a 50-foot piece, is that what it is?
It's a little longer than that, but we, we've ran it by them before, and they didn't have the money in the previous one.
When you say them, you mean the state, or?
State Highway, when they did North and South Seaton. And that was what was, was all that. This project, I have been to the last meetings, but what it was supposed to go up to North Alley.
And then, and everything's gonna be replaced in town, except for that one little piece?
With this project, this contractor, that was not part of their contract, so Romano Construction, who's doing this, will not be doing that part.
Well, is it any way that we can, does it tell?
You still gotta remember, there's that light pole, there's that streetlight pole there, or that telephone pole, or whatever pole is there, that is the concern for that sidewalk, and until State Highway determines what they wanna do with that pole, you can't really, you know, they're not gonna do anything with that sidewalk until their engineer comes up with a plan. I'll send another email to Sam DeLaurence tomorrow about this, and see where we are, but I know that it's not part of this project.
Okay.
Okay?
I was just, I just thought they left it out because it was part of the square.
No.
We could remind them again that we were told that, that we didn't have the money then to finish it, and it's just.
This is a new year.
I mean, I remember hearing that that was gonna get done at a later time, as part of that first project, first of all, and if the engineer hasn't looked at it, then, I'm sort of surprised, because then it sounds like the engineer never intended to look at it, because it should've been looked at when the first project was happening, on the North and South Seaton.
They have, they have looked at it, and I think the last email that I saw was, they were trying to figure out a way to not move the pole.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll send another email tomorrow.
But what I'm saying, I'm not putting this on you, I'm putting this on them, saying that, that was a decision they should've made when they were working on North Seaton in the first place, as to where this was gonna happen, and then it sounds like to me that they never intended to do it in the first place, because they're now formulating a plan for a project that's already quote-unquote completed, because the money wasn't there to fund it fully.
I don't know about, I didn't know about the, the money, not being there, that's why it wasn't done, but, but you're talking, you know, unfortunately, we're talking logistics regarding State Highway and other contractors, and, and sometimes there's no rhyme or reason to what they do, but I will definitely follow up with Sam DeLaurence tomorrow, and find out where they are with this sidewalk piece.
My question is, if they don't have the money to do it, can the town put, can we get the money for, can we pay for that piece of sidewalk to be done?
It's, it's State Highway sidewalk, right there.
Let's go back with them.
Let me, let me try, let me see what's, get a more definitive answer, I was not aware of it being the money issue, so I'll, I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow, and as soon as I get a response, I will forward that onto the board.
Thank you.
And if it takes something from the board to present a letter to the State Highway to fix it, then by all means, let's do it.
Right, and that may be what it comes to, because we've had to do that before.
All right.
So I'll find out what the answer is tomorrow, and.
It'd be a shame.
Definitely pass it back on.
Replace everything in the whole town, just leave that little 50-foot, or whatever area is out.
I'll see what I can find out.
Because it really looks bad compared to what the new part's gonna be, since they're gonna go all the way up to North Alley.
Right.
Anyways.
And it's, it's a safer sidewalk, I mean, with that curb, it protects the pedestrians better.
And they won't have any, they won't have the Maryland's, they won't have the slip, you know, unslipped stuff, you know how they have the yellow, the yellow stuff?
Right, the warning tread, yeah.
That piece won't be done, yeah, in front of where the church comes in and out.
Okay. Please, yes, contact them, and, Mr. Mayor, also, please, you know, give us the update based on the money thing, or whatever it is, I mean, that's what's.
That was presented at one meeting, because we, we brought to their attention back way when, when they were working on North Seaton, and, and that was, that was it, and I think the, the idea was, well, let's, we have so many other things going on, let's get that done, and we'll go back to them and, and check that out, why it wasn't done, how we, how they can budget to have it done. We always agreed with it didn't look right, I mean, I'm, I'm up there four days a week.
Sure.
Five days a week.
Sure. You know, I, but I'm, I'm just saying that, any energy we can put into this to have this resolved, while we have the people in place to get the job done, would be best. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. So I'm not saying it's, you know, staff, I'm not saying it's yourself, I'm just saying, you know, encourage with great emphasis on, you know, getting it.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, so, as they move back westbound, they will continue with tree work and removing the trees. They hope to have all the trees removed, I believe it's by the end of next week, from Olive Main Street. Sidewalk project, Romano Construction invoices. As, as things have occurred, and damages have happened, staff has been invoicing on behalf of the town to be reimbursed for the damages. As you can see, there's a streetlight pole damage, two waterlines damaged, and then a streetlight again, and then streetlight wire repair where the conduit was tore up. We've sent them a total of, total of $7,520.44 in invoices, with no response from them. And on my to-do list this week is to send them to John Clapp for his recommendation on how to proceed, if we need to send them another invoice for payment. We do have one more invoice forthcoming for the repair of the conduit and streetlights on East Main Street from September of 2017. As they move down East Main Street, in the area of 22 East Main, when they jumped to when they jumped to that side of the road, the very next day, we had five streetlights out on, around the square and East Main Street. So staff went out to make the repair, hired our contractor to make the repair and when the contractor and staff dug it up in front of twenty-two East Main, we found damaged PVC piping. It appeared to be from either a jackhammer or a backhoe or whatever equipment they used and they had punctured the PVC and ripped through the conduit, which then, if you have damaged conduit, your streetlights don't work and they tried to repair it with duct tape and covered it back up with cement. So we had a meeting up there on East Main Street, myself and Mr. Click, State Highway and the contract, the owner of the company, to show them the damage. It's took three days for our contractor, our electrical contractor to get the problem fixed. Once we have all the invoices together, we'll be sending it to Romano for payment as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
How come, if the state is ahead of this project, why wouldn't they, will you send it to the state and have the state go through the contract? They're the ones that hired them, correct?
Right, we send it to the state initially and they send it on to Romano, that's the way the contract's written.
Okay.
Well, it's, cause the state's paying them, correct?
Right, but that's the way, I guess, the MOU was written.
Yeah.
So, we send them to State Highway and then they pass it on to the contractor and then,
Well, um.
I will get with John Clapp this week to figure out payment. We received our first invoice from State Highway for the waterline work. So I'm gonna discuss that with John Clapp as well with these outstanding invoices.
Well, and another thing, I imagine they have insurance? They have insurance that they damaged utilities and stuff, they have to be able to have insurance to fix it. If they're a contractor, they have to have liability insurance.
I know.
So they're, you know, their insurance should cover that, what they bring.
I agree.
Even though if they don't wanna pay for it, their insurance should pay for it.
Maybe you need to come to one of the meetings with the owner of the company. So we're working on that.
You got one this week, I'm off Friday, Saturday, or Thursday, or December, the sixth.
I think my next one's next week sometime.
Oh.
Any que, oh, sorry, any questions on the square project? All in all, despite these outstanding invoices, they are moving, moving fairly quickly. You know, the work seems to be doing well, they're attentive to the citizens complaints that come in. Their head, head guy and State Highway go out and typically meet with the citizens that do complaints. They are very attentive to any concerns that we have. They're working around Fallen Firefighter, they worked around our election. I will certainly let them know about the Halloween parade and the Hal, and trick-or-treating to see what they can do as far as that's concerned, so. Any questions on the square or sidewalks?
Just a recommendation, I know we've advised property owners and business owners that it's coming. I've been in touch with both barber shops, one on the square, one just up from the square. They're both keenly concerned that it's gonna affect their business in an adverse way and I've, I've tried to give them, you know, the logic that I know and the process that I know, but anything to reassure them, I think, would be helpful because.
We try to give them as much notice as we can. Miss Sipperly has a business email blast that goes to all the property owners on Main Street so we can do the best that we can to let them know when it's coming.
Okay, that's perfect.
Anybody else? Nope, bridge project, Flat Run Bridge. Estimated completion, December of 2019. That's how long the contractor has to complete this project.
He said Sep- September?
December twenty nineteen.
Sorry.
Two years, a little over two years from now.
Thank you.
Just a few pictures of the work as it's been going on. There's the pedestrian bridge that everybody loves. Work going on underneath the bridge. Some more work, alright. Flat Run Bridge update, they're thirty point seven percent complete. They are slightly behind schedule, but not a whole lot, I was surprised. So right now, Phase One stream diversion has been completed. We sent a letter to State Highway regarding our ten-inch waterline, which I will update you on here in a bit. Installed, they installed a portable sediment tank. The demolition of the southwest quadrant has been completed. Once they complete the demo of the bridge, they'll start saw cutting the bridge deck and I had a meeting, progress meeting on this, on the bridge on Sept- September twenty-eighth, myself, Miss Sipperly and Mr. Fissell attended. We met with State Highway prior to the meeting and it's been proposed that the waterline will be moved. However, State Highway will pick up their portion of the funding and the contractor will absorb the town's cost for the waterline to be moved as well as the engineering fees to div, to design the waterline to be, or the waterline movement. The only expense the town will have would be the engineering review of the project. However, this construction company is unable to design a waterline movement, however, the movement of the waterline. So we're working with our engineer to see how, since he has all the knowledge, to see how he could design it with no conflict of interest, so we are working on that. There would be a memorandum of understanding that says, once this waterline is complete, you cannot come back and ask the town to pay for this. So we're still in the negotiation process with this, but it's looking like the waterline will still be remo, will still be moved, but at no expense to the town, except for some engineering review fees, which in the long run, we're getting new waterline. I think it'll be a win-win for the town.
Where is the waterline located?
Goes underneath one forty.
Directly under the bridge?
No, it goes under the road. Lines up to, it's, if you're looking at the bridge there, without having the exact drawing with me, I believe it goes across the road to the east of the bridge, the ten-inch line.
So it's laid under the bridge?
Right, no, to the east of it, on the road.
And they don't wanna lay it back under the bridge again?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have, I don't have all the particulars with exactly where the line goes and the.
Is that a question about the bridge itself? Once it gets done, if I understand correctly, won't it be like a wider channel?
Yes.
Is that the idea? Cause it won't be, you know, the possibility of it backing up will be a lot less once they get done with it.
Right, correct, and then you'll have wider sidewalks to walk as well.
I'm kinda thinking of that one bridge that's of, shoot, it's the first street when you cross the state line going into Pennsylvania into Gettysburg, you know, they headed down, they were working on that project about three years ago.
Right.
I'm kinda projecting as my mind, that's the way it's gonna look, I guess.
I believe that's the way it's supposed to look.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you're satisfied with what the, the program, like, do you agree with the win-win on the project?
Uh, yes, we're, you know, staff has really been on top of these people. We're chomping at their heels on this every meeting. We have a wonderful lady there, Sherry, who's a project manager for both projects. It's sometimes overwhelming and, but she is good and two different builders, so it gets hectic, but we're, staff's done a terrific job of being on what, you know, once you get in the ground, you never know what you got.
Sure, correct.
Might have a granite here and a wonderful place here and that's, that's part of this thing, it's an old bridge.
A concern that was brought to my attention, I'm trying to kinda address rumor control, as it were, you know, provide rumor control. I'd heard in one part that there were not enough workers for the bridge to continue, so they had to delay in the, the project. So that's not accurate, okay?
No, there's, right now, this waterline is not causing a delay of the project.
Okay, not, not the waterline, but just the.
They are advertising for employees, they are advertising for staff. They are continuing to work, a lot of their work is being done right now under the bridge.
Okay.
So you're not gonna necessarily see everything that's happening, but yes, they are, they are hiring from what I understand.
Okay, so, alright, great. Terrific.
Kathy, we have a workfare coming up and it'd be nice for them to get it out.
Good point, no, that's true.
Yeah. Does staff have a recommendation where the waterline, the new waterline's gonna be, is it gonna be in, in, under the creek?
The engineer, our Fox Engineering will design where the, the appropriate placement for the ten-inch waterline and two additional valves.
It would be nice.
So.
Inside the bridge and also to have it where in case there's a, you can repair it, you know, and don't have it too close to anything else.
Right.
Even the bridge, that way staff can repair it when they had to, if they ever had to.
Anybody else, any other questions?
I think we're good, any other questions? Okay. Pool?
Alright, moving on to the pool. Estimated completion, May of 2018. We're moving along on the pool. Here's some pictures of the work, ooh. There you go. The work that's being done so, work that's being done so far. As you can see, that all the demolition's been done and the interior work of the pool's been started. There's the, all the new plumbing that's being put in. The, the little cutouts there are gonna be partly where the lights are gonna be. So, what's been done so far? He's thirty-three percent completes on the completed work so far. He is on track for the completion of May twenty eighteen. Right now, the major items that have been completed is the leak detection survey, the leak survey's been done. The, all the drawings and permitting's been done, the demolition work is complete. They had to, per Sta, uh, the State Health Department, we had to widen the deep end of the pool to continue with the diving well. The interior pool lighting's been installed, but it will not be complete, the lighting will not be completed a hundred percent till the pool shell's been completed. The, he still needs to finish installing the rebar cage and the pool shell. Unfortunately, there is an underground spring, because nothing goes smoothly. There's an underground spring that is leaking into the deep end of the pool on the right, if you're looking at the pool on the right-hand side.
Leaking into the pool.
Leaking in the, it drains in the pool, sometimes it trickles into the pool, sometimes it gushes into the pool. Well, he can't shoot the concrete into the pool as long as this underground spring is leaking into the pool. So we got an estimate from our, he gave us an estimate to make the repair of the underground spring and we got an estimate from a local company to redirect the underground spring and that work should be started this week or next week. Once that's done, once the rebar cage has been done, he'll be able to shoot the concrete shell of the pool, which he's estimating that to be done by Thanksgiving of this year. In-house staff needs to address the sheds located at three oh three West Lincoln for the church because the health department has a concern that anyone can climb onto the sheds and jump over the fence, so either we need to move the sheds or increase the height of the fence near the pool. So those are the main issues that we're dealing with at the pool so far. If you move on, for the pool funding update. If you recall, we were approved for a community parks and playground pool grant, which is a hundred percent funded. We don't have to have any ma, matching funds. That original grant was two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars. We have spent a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two sixty-two to date, leaving us remaining grant funds of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. In Fund Two, with the budget transfers that we made planning fiscal year eighteen's budget, we had an initial amount available, which includes your grant and then the town funds that we set aside for three hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And as I mentioned, we, we set us, we spent a hundred and fifty-eight, two sixty-two. So what we have remaining in our budget is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents, which will be enough to complete the project without any other major unforeseen springs, wells, catastrophes. Any questions?
Um, I, go ahead.
I guess my main concern right now is this underground spring, you know, future. All this under the pool, here we are spending all this money on a nice new pool and it's.
Being completely redirected.
So, could you provide us more information on that, like?
How do they do it?
They're putting a front drain in, is that what they're doing?
Exactly.
I have the, I have the, um.
You have to be putting a front drain in.
I, I have everything that's being done, it's on my desk.
Okay.
Actually Jimmy has it, so I'll have to get it to him.
It's like someone's well back in the day, you know, some house that was probably built there back, back then.
Cause I don't, I don't think you put pipes in for that thing, unless they put pipes in with holes in it that, that carry the water down through.
Okay.
Kathy, can that spring be tapped as a water source for the pool?
No, it's not that much.
It's enough for a nuisance.
It's just a, yeah, exactly, it's enough to be a nuisance and slow things, yeah.
Just enough.
Not cynical.
And then for future, or maybe when the pool's completed, the community, the Lions Club Community Heritage Day would maybe be interested in maybe opening concession stand up for use.
Okay.
We, we can talk to that, further use for fundraising for the community for the Heritage Day. Maybe using the concession stand during the week or just in the summertime if we get somebody to run it.
The Trail Committee had the same idea.
We could go in together for stopping.
It'd be nice to use it, I remember when it was opened before.
Yes, definitely, I noted that. Any other questions about the pool? Nope, smooth sailing? Alright, Dog Park. Estimated completion, late winter, early spring of 2018. This is just a, the site, site plan for the Dog Park, the location near the tennis court and the dimensions. That's some of the clearing that was done. Clearing as of this, two weeks ago. So far, the sites, the, the site's been cleared, the fence contractor, we've signed a contract. Next step will be to install the fence, the mulch, the site, which we're gonna do in-house. We'll purchase the mulch, but have staff install it. Waterline and the amenities.
Just curiously, why are we going with mulch?
It's not, it's not, it's basically what it is, is the same mulch that you have in your playgrounds. So it's not like mulch, it's like wood carpet. It's safe for pets, it's not gonna degrade. It's not gonna hold the urine smell. It's, after doing some research, it's cost-effective. It's not having to plant grass, having to put chemicals down for your grass.
Is there somewhere in town that we already use it, this, this type of?
All our playgrounds.
Huh, okay. But there's, will, there will be no natural grass in there, it will all be mulch?
It, it, you'll have patches of grass, but it's gonna be all mulch.
Okay.
Cause if you leave it, if you leave it like this, it's gonna get muddy. It's gonna help with drainage, it's gonna help with erosion. You can't use gravel, it's not safe. This is after contacting several other places that have dog parks. This was what they recommended and doing some research, that mulch was what was recommended. Safe for all.
Okay, well.
Cost-effective.
I, I don't know, I, I get concerned, I think grass would be, my hope is that in time, maybe we, we move to grass after we try the mulch. Cause I just think that's a better surface for dogs.
Okay.
Just a thought, but you know, we're getting it off the ground, I understand. But I, I think grass might be a better medium.
I have to go back and look through my notes and why the recommendation was against grass.
Sure, sure.
I'll have to go back and see what exactly the reasoning was. If you look at the funding for the Dog Park update, clear, spent to date, we've spent eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars on, sixty-eight hundred dollars to clear the site. The site pant, plan was eleven hundred and administrative items for advertising permitting. The fundraiser was five hundred and twenty, so we spent eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-five so far. On the right-hand side, you'll see the remaining items to be funded. The fence estimate was twelve thousand, seven hundred, the mulch is fifteen hundred, the waterline is twenty-nine hundred. The items we were looking to fundraise for was obviously the fence, but the waterline and the water fountains and. and benches. I mean, we're estimating high on the cost of these things. Five pet waste stations would be nice. We don't have to have five, but it'd be nice. We don't have to have four benches. These are just things we're estimating high on. Um, so the total cost brings you to about $33,775. Um, and if you move to this next page, we, so far with the fundraising, we've raised 1,800. Um, we are going to make another campaign on the fundraising. Once we get the fence up and it actually looks like something right now, you're just looking at an empty field. Um, we received, uh, we were approved, the original grant we submitted to the POS grant, or Project Open Space, was $17,265. That was based on, um, another location, and in that request, there were no amenities asked for. No water of line, no water fountains. I think it was only, um, two benches, no pet waste stations. So the grant that we requested, um, was not an accurate, um, reflection of what, uh, the dog park would actually cost. Unfortunately, we were only approved for $13,000. So right now, we have $4,574 left in the grant to spend on the dog park.
So how much money you need left? Twenty?
We need $25,350, but you take off-
Four thousand.
You take off the 4,000, right there.
Five hundred seventy-four.
Where's it? Eighteen thousand, there it is. $18,910 is still what we need to fund, to fully fund it. That would include your four b-, all the amenities of it.
And, um, I do have another question. You said we're going to have, now this is looking for this budget, I mean, order coming up. You said we're gonna have $130,000 extra? You need to know where we're gonna put this money?
Right, and, and one of the recommendations will be, um, additional funding for the, to, to complete the dog park.
Okay.
Um, and we are making, you know, a campaign for, I know we've talked to a lot of people that are interested in donating for a bench and for a wa-, a pet waste station, as well as a water fountain and things like that. And I think, you know, are you gonna be donating to an open field? Once we get progress made, we're hoping that, uh, we can start getting some donations in so we can complete the project.
What would be good is probably we just designate a full mountain tour, and when we get the donations, is just take the donations off of that.
Right.
Probably, that way we know we have the money coming in on the four, to complete the park. I mean, that would be my recommendation, to fully fund it, and then when a donation comes in, just put that money back.
Right. So that's where we are with all the projects. Like I said, this is just a icing on the, you know, the tip of the iceberg. Oh, question?
I have a few questions. Um, the fundraising, $18,910.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen, what?
$18,910 and 75 percent, 75 cents.
That's what we need to raise.
That's what we need to, what's, that's what's needed to, left to fund the project.
The other attachment we received with our agenda packet was the water bill, what, the newsletter?
Newsletter.
And there was a goal of 15,000?
That was for the fundraising, because if you, if you recall, we have, we didn't have all the final numbers when we did the initial, um, fundraising request. You know, we didn't have, um, the estimate on what the fence would cost. We only, you know, we estimated what we thought it would cost. So these, these numbers that you have in this PowerPoint are your true numbers. So this fundraising, um, goal, you know, we were hoping to get 15,000. That was, you know, just what our goal was. You know, we'd love to, uh, fundraise more, but we're trying to be realistic.
So the numbers we have are, assuming we receive our, our fundraising, everyone comes forward and-
No, I mean, no, that's what we were hoping for. What this is, the $18,910 is what's left to, to, to fully fund this project, whether or not it's through fundraising or if it's town funds.
Okay. And then explain to me the, the grant again. I was, I, I remember the mayor tonight, he made a comment about the, the grant. Something fell through?
We, we applied for a, um, privately funded grant, and I believe, like, 3,000, there were 3,000 applications. We did not get the grant.
Okay, so that would've just helped all-
Right, and so, um, Ms. Shaw here applied for it. Um, it was through a, a commercial company that was funding dog parks, and we just didn't get the grant.
Well, we still have our initial-
We still have our initial Project Open Space grant.
That's what I was afraid, when he, when he said that, I was-
No, we did not lose that. No. We were trying to get more money.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll jump in, is that okay? Anybody with a question?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Um, as a suggestion, uh, number one, uh, thank you for the presentation. It's helpful. I think we all have a reasonable understanding to these significant projects. Um, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for seeing this through. Um, if it's possible, could we get these items? The graphics are great. Could we get similar graphics posted at the sites? Like, for example, on Main Street for the sidewalk, the, the sidewalk project, the bulletin board about where we are and the, the, sort of the update with our-
We actually put this all online. It's all on our website, um-
Well, that, that's good, but what I'm sticking with is the idea that if we have it on-site, as people walk by and use the parks, for example, they can see this. And that's pretty important. I mean, it's the same idea that we bring attention when the, the community grants are applied to the houses and the buildings on Main Street. We try to put a sign there, and, and that way people have a sense that this is what's going on, because it does show evidence of progress based on all the work you guys are doing and what we're trying to get done. Um, just a, a visual representation of, you know, we're making progress here. Here's where we are. We've got the, you know, the, the boxes to tick off, and I think that'll show folks that it's not a static project. Like, we are monitoring, it is moving forward, and here's measurable evidence of that.
Okay. Where we can post, we will.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We'll have to check the, uh, I think there's already something up with this, at the, board, but we'll see where we can post some things.
That'd be great.
But the whole PowerPoint is online for, for anybody in the, in the public to view.
And there is some bullet marks in the park around it.
Yeah, it's really worn down.
Kiosks.
Very worn down. Yes.
Okay, we move now to our next agenda item, assuming everybody's good with this? Okay? All right, so we turn to our last agenda item of the evening that relates to, um, the new Route 140 Bridge at Flat Run dedication requested in the name of Terry L. Myers, and we turn to staff for this.
I'm gonna make the presentation.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, okay, yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, we have a request for proposed memorial dedication, uh, facility, uh, for which the dedication is requested is a 140 flat-run bridge upon completion. Location of the facility is on Route 140 in Emmitsburg, East Main Street. Requested dedication is in the name of Terry L. Myers. Uh, Terry L. Myers was a member of the Vigilant Hose Company. He died in the line of duty on February 15th, 1999. He was the first, uh, company member, and I believe the only company member to die in the line of duty. Uh, this is come, uh, request from, uh, local fire company. Relevance and significance, uh, for the Maryland citizen. Historic importance of Emmitsburg, also Emmitsburg houses the National Emergency Training Center. Thus, many firefighters come to Emmitsburg. We'd like to honor our community and, and the men and women who serve in the line of duty, uh, through this dedication. That was part of the submission statement. Uh, support for dedication, I, I have not contacted any other officials. I was coming to you all first, and, um, it seemed like a, a, a very worthy cause, presentation for a local, man, he, uh, again, he died in the line of service, so, here we go. We have a lot to do. We have to get the state highway degree in. We, we have to go through a lot of things, but we want to get, get it by, see if it works for you.
Okay, uh, do we have support of the board for the mayor and staff to pursue this?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Would you like a, a vote from the board?
Please.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to support the pursuit of this bridge dedication? Is that the appropriate way we would frame it? Was that satisfactory?
That's fine, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to support the, um, moving forward for this, uh, Flat One Bridge dedication, uh, for Terry Myers.
Very good. Is there a second for the motion made by Commissioner Buckman?
I'll second the motion.
Great. The motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman. It's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff. Okay, so now we turn to agenda items for our November 6th meeting. Is this when we anticipate the visit from President Trainor?
Yes, that's what I was gonna, not, people coming.
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, so the agenda for November 6th, I have President Trainor from the Mount. Under Admin Business, I have the proclamation that, um, November is Municipal Government Works Month. It's an MML requirement. Under Admin Business, Staff would like to present a Open Meetings Act update. Our town clerk recently attended training, and there's some, been some changes to the Open Meeting Acts. We'd like to make a presentation on that. Under Consent Agenda, the mayor would like to present Frank Davis for consideration to be appointed to the Planning Commission. And then Agenda Item Number Two will be your update on the MS4 permit. And finally, Holiday Parking for December, meter parking.
Wow.
Already.
Yeah, that's something.
I know. It's painful. And that's what I have.
All right. Anybody else have any other items for the November meeting?
I missed the one, but between, um, Mr. Davis and the Planning Commission and the holiday parking. Was there something in between there, MS?
No.
Oh, okay.
Open Meetings Act update.
Update, MS4 permit?
MS4, okay.
Okay. Um, okay. So, is there a motion to accept the agenda as present, the agenda as presenter, presented?
Make a motion to accept agenda as presented?
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Um, any further comments from the board?
Just a reminder, we have public hearing on October 16th.
Yep. That's what I was gonna say. That's what I was gonna say. Same thing, so, that's all.
Any, any former comment, any additional comment from the board?
That's right.
No. No, that's okay. All right, so, staff, a question. Um, do we know of any other vendor who might offer a similar product? Have we, has there been any further effort to see if there's a competitor out there, just curiously?
I have not. Personally, I have not sought out any other competitors.
Okay.
Um, I would think as much as we've been talking about it, it's been in the paper. We advertised the public hearing.
Sure.
Um, I would think if there were other vendors, maybe we would've heard from them.
Okay.
I, I, personally, I have not reached out and, and tried to find anybody else.
Okay. Um, I'm good, thank you. All right. As an aside, there is homeowner's insurance and renter's insurance that might also cover this expense. Does anybody have an interest in having a property and casualty insurer present anything at the meeting? Cause this is the closest thing I think we would have to a competitor, to the company offering this specific product. Do you follow what I mean? Like, somebody from Nationwide or GEICO or whatever?
Yeah. Um, do we have enough time?
Correct. Well, that's kind of what I'm, I'm wondering.
I think it's gonna be much more expensive than what they were saying, because I think the homeowner's insurance that I have now for all state didn't, doesn't, didn't cover it. Doesn't, doesn't cover any of it.
Okay.
Did it outside the house?
Yeah, but you're gonna pay a lot, just like for flood insurance.
Right. But is there a rider or something? I mean, my, my interest would be to actually approach, like, the, the gentleman on the strip mall over here and ask him, you know, is there a rider available, like, an, like an add-on to one's homeowner's insurance? And what the fee for that would be as compared to the cost of this program? Um, I, I'm just trying to find some means of competition, so those who need this product, or, you know, who, who want the safety net, have the best opportunity for it. That's kind of what I'm going, I'm, I'm all for the competition thing, so-
I think they're just offering it. You don't have to take it, and unfortunately, right?
No.
No, you're not obligated to, but, just like, but, so-
You can choose not to have it at all. Go with your homeowner's insurance if you'd like.
Correct, but, but what we're talking about endorsing is also the exact same thing, where it's an option. You don't have to take it. You're not obligated to. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to give, um, I'm just trying to brainstorm on the idea, like, basically, is there something out there competitive that would drive the price down or give an advantage to, you know, our community?
Do you remember how low the price was already?
I do. It was what, six bucks a month up to $25 a month?
Yeah, I think it was five something, and then it went up.
There's three different, it added up to, if you took all three, it added up to like 23, or $23 a month.
It was $23 for all three.
Right, so-
That covers your sewer, your outside, your water, and your inside.
Right.
The only concern with going with something like an insurance company is you're gonna lose that partnership with the town. You know, with this, this company, you're gonna have the, the partnership with the town. They're gonna know exactly where the water lines and sewer lines are and where the responsibility lies, and they're gonna field the Carl's 24/7 and get you a plumber out immediately. Your insurance company, I don't know if you've dealt with your insurance company, but they're not getting you anybody in 24 hours unless, I guess, your house is completely underwater. But, uh, I mean, that's, that's certainly, if you wanna bring in somebody, I don't-
Can we think about even getting our local plumbers to come to that meeting to, I mean, are they going to-
We can invite anybody we choose to. I mean, if, if you wanna contact a plumber, I would really encourage you to do that, to say, hey, there's a meeting, here's what's being discussed. Would you be available? And I, I'd like to pursue the same with, um, you know, any property and casualty providers, like, you know, home insurance providers. Again, just so we have a, a, a full picture here, um, I just find myself very concerned that we're, we're endorsing a single product. That's, that's, you know, where my, where my concern is. So I wanna give everybody the best advantage. Okay, well, there it is. Um, so, to that end, uh, is there any further discussion, any other comment related to the meeting tonight?
Potentially, the earliest we'd be voting on this would be December, then?
Which one?
The warranty program, cause it's not on the agenda for November.
They're having your public hearing.
Yeah.
On the 16th.
And it's for consideration at your public hearing, so potentially you could vote at the October 16th meeting on it.
Okay, thank you.
It's been advertised that way, so we're clear that way, right?
It's been advertised everywhere.
What I mean, it's been advertised as a-
Yes.
A consideration, a, a voteable item, as it were. Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, is there a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Amen.